It's a mighty long time. Thank you. Everybody get on. You want to take any? Get in. Okay, one way or two. Anybody bring it in there. Fleming? Okay, one, two, three, cheese. One more hang on there. Get one for the party. One, two, three. You gotta speak on our Facebook page. All right. Thank you. Jeff, do you have a word? Oh, I don't say good-bye yet. Thirty-five years. Come on. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Peace.
I'd just like to say thank you to my coworkers, my family, for coming here. And when you're doing something that you really like to do, thirty-five years goes a lot faster than you realize.
You're right there.
Before we get to the ugly, which even though it's a short meeting, we'll give you guys an opportunity. You can get on out of here and not stick around for this, Tim. Thanks for coming down, everybody. Man, that's amazing. That's a good turnout. Thirty-five years. Maybe you'll be with us for thirty-five years, Jim. Thirty-five years. Man, I know if they're clearing out, we're a little lopsided. Lean them to the right.
I have thirty more to go.
All right.
Yeah. Let's move right along. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll hold off one second. Exciting group. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one, consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have five resolutions. First resolution approving free fund of liquor license for Motto's Public House LLC, doing business as Motto's Public House LLC. The second is a resolution approving engagement letter with Piper, Jaffray &amp; Company to serve as underwriter for issuance of general obligation of refunding bonds, Series 2017 A and B. The third is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Piper, Jaffray &amp; Company to serve as dissemination agent for secondary market disclosure. The fourth is a resolution approving an agreement with H.R. Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for engineering services at the Burlington wastewater treatment facility for a nutrient reduction strategy feasibility study. And the fifth is a resolution approving an agreement with H.R. Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, of engineering services at the Burlington wastewater treatment facility for evaluation of local limits. And we also have one public hearing set for January 16th for the consideration of an ordinance, of amendment to ordinance number 3151, an ordinance prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent agenda? I see none. Counsel?
No.
Your honor, I move to approve all items listed under item one, consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Let's take it to vote. Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCandle?
Aye.
I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 162 Fire Prevention Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Just to recap, what we're asking the council to approve is changing from the 2012 to the 2015 International Fire Code. And then we're also modifying the times for the recreational fires from, be seven days a week from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So those are the only two changes in that ordinance. Unless you guys have any questions for me.
If done. Any questions from the audience?
Are there any major changes to the?
Can I have you come to? Thank you, Mr.
Jerry Fenton, 2520 Mount Pleasant Street. Just questioning what changes, if any, that would apply to commercial?
There are some small modifications in the fire code. The one thing that the international code does is it works very closely with the building code. And so, well, to give you an example, the schools, we always encourage the schools to have fire drills within the first 10 days of school. With the 2015 code, it's now a requirement. So I'll be working with the schools to make sure that that happens, that they conduct fire drills within the first 10 days, even though we like for them to do that anyway. It's a little tweaking like that. There is some other things involving like elevators as far as enclosures and that kind of stuff, but there isn't anything major in this fire code. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Counsel?
No.
I would like to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 162 Fire Prevention Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 162 Fire Prevention Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Let's vote on the amendment.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCandle?
Aye.
Okay, and now is amended.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCandle?
Aye.
Well done. All right. This has been a tough meeting tonight, guys. I'm not going to lie to you. At this time, we're going to entertain comments from the audience. So if there's anybody from the audience that has comments? Christina? Can you come give us your name and address, please?
Christina Hancock, 831 Curran Street. I'm looking to try to get the livestock ordinance 65.31 amended to exclude pot-bellied pigs from being considered livestock and to consider them pets.
What did you just call me? Sorry, go ahead.
Basically, I sent email. I don't know if everybody got one or not, but I have copies if you didn't. Even the USDA doesn't even classify pot-bellied pigs as livestock because they are not used for meat or farming purposes. They are considered pets and were originally brought over for research and then became pets. And even the surrounding city ordinances even classify them in their own section and often exclude them from the livestock ordinances in other cities. And basically, I just wanted to try to get them excluded and have an amendment to where, you know, they'd be treated basically like dogs, cats, that sort of thing, have to have their proper vaccinations, can't be a nuisance, can't run at large, that sort of thing. So that's basically the points I'm trying to get across. I'm really nervous if you can't tell.
Terry, we won't bite.
It's funny, though, but, you know, everybody says, you know, it's not, it's no big deal, but when you come down and you do have to speak.
It was fine sitting when I had to get up. It's a little nerve-wracking.
But you're doing fine. You're doing good.
But I hope that that can be something that we can work on and hopefully get a change and, because I'd love to have a pig.
Mr. Tisland, did you look into, did you look into some of that at all?
A little bit. It falls under the animal control section of the code. I haven't had a chance to look at other communities yet, but.
He's just getting back from vacation.
I think you cited in your email that, I think the city of Des Moines has made this change, haven't they? Yeah, Des Moines has, let me find it here. Des Moines has, they have them listed under a pet article and allowed within city limits, but they limit the number of how many people can own the three. And then even Fort Madison charges $20 registration fee for pigs and they have a limit of 60 pounds. That's the general consensus I'm getting from city ordinances around town. And Mount Pleasant wasn't really clear. They just said that they couldn't be running at large and nuisance.
How big, how big do these animals get?
They can, they can get up to 175 pounds.
Wow.
But in comparison to the same poundage of a dog, they are smaller, they're more compact animal, so they might weigh the same as, say, like a Great Dane, but in size comparison, they're only going to take up a small portion of what a Great Dane would take. But that's.
Do you guys have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. It wasn't so bad, was it? Did you want this brought forward at a following work session as a topic?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. All right. Come on down.
Once again, Jerry Fenton, 2520 Mount Pleasant Street. Unfortunately, I'm not here today to talk about my philanthropy in town, which I thank you guys very much for your award last time. This time, it's business-related and I'm not for certain that you'd received my letter. It's not a pleasant subject that I'd like to delve into, but being that I know Bob Fleming, that you are on the Convention and Visitors Bureau as a member of, appointed member, not a voting member. Jim Furnoo, I know that you are with the Chamber of Commerce as an appointed member.
Downtown Partners.
Downtown Partners. Shane, you're on economic development.
Actually, that's Mayor Protem that's going to be taking over economic development for '17.
Jim Davison, then? Okay. This was last year's information. And the reason that they do that, the only reason that I know this is because I've sat on those boards during previous administrations that you've had as a voting member and a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And the reason that that's so important is because you guys are the direct, my direct representative to the Chamber of Commerce and those different entities. And the reason that you guys don't vote is because to avoid any conflict of interest, which I definitely appreciate. And why I bring this to your attention is a little bit of, it's about hotel motel tax, how it's allocated, and some of the issues that I'm having with the Chamber of Commerce. First of all, history lesson, the Convention and Visitors Bureau came to be because of the Chamber of Commerce's, they were instrumental in lobbying the city, state, and the voting populace of Burlington to allow a pillow tax to be used in Burlington. Part of that tax, as you know, goes towards economic development for the city of Burlington and the other is to fund the Convention and Visitors and Director's job here in Burlington. It does not have to be, your predecessors farmed that part of the city council out to the Chamber of Commerce to operate the Convention and Visitors Bureau as a, an entity of Grow Greater. Burlington is an umbrella corporation. However, each one of those organizations is 501(c)(3) non-for-profit organization, from what I understand. And with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, it happens to be a direct extension of the city council of Burlington. You guys can set agenda with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, or at any time, you can disband the Convention and Visitors and bring it in-house. That's not what I'm asking you to do. Where my issue lies is still with history, 13 years ago, I, well, I own a hotel here, a little motel here in Burlington, Iowa, and a couple of commercial properties. I wanted to take my brochure down to the welcome center. When I walked in, met the lady down there that was running the convention center, remind you, this was three Convention and Visitors Directors ago and three presidents of the Chamber of Commerce's ago. And I walked in and said, I'd like to have my brochure put here with all of the other hotels, and I was told at that time that I could not, in fact, unless I was a Chamber of Commerce member. The only issue that I have with that is the Chamber of Commerce, at the time, how I feel now, was excluding me. I joined the chamber reluctantly, paid my dues, which was charged by room, not a flat membership. As time went along, I did not agree with a lot of the policies. Once again, sitting on the Convention and Visitors Bureau during Beth Brightenstein-Nichols' term, there was an incident where there was a quiet zone issue that came up because the Vice President K. Sackville-Brewer came into the meeting and they said that they would like to hire an outside agency to help develop a feasibility study for the city of Burlington to create a quiet zone. So, and what they needed was forced to vote from us, trying to allocate $20,000 or $40,000, as I remember, from each organization to directly influence this council. After that meeting, I was the only dissenting of vote. I was told by K. Sackville-Brewer that she was very unhappy with me and my vote. A week later, I was told that my tenure with the board was no longer needed, that my term had ended. I felt it my best interest to sever ties with the Convention and Visitors Bureau because I don't want my business elicited with any kind of impropriety. And the issue still holds true today that there is a pay-for-play with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I understand that the Convention and Visitors Bureau Director is hired directly by the President Chamber of Commerce. It seems that their agenda has been more about membership to the chamber than it is about representing or influencing the representation from the community. For 13 years now, I have vied to go with, against Wendy Hogan, Beth Brightenstein-Nichols, Chelsea today, that my business should be listed in the Convention and Visitors Guide, wherein lies another conflict of interest. The only hotels that are listed in the Convention and Visitors Guide happens to be chamber members. You can buy an ad, that will tell me, but I don't want to buy an ad, but I'm still excluded, not listed. However, there are 10 hotels in the Burlington area that are collecting hotel motel tax. And the pillow tax I collect is sent off to the treasurer state of Iowa and then, as you know, divvied up to the communities and comes back to be used here. It is not in the city's best interest not to list all tax generating entities, I'm quite certain. They list every park in the city of Burlington that does not have a listing, but the one entity that allows the whole organization to even be is a business like my own. So I know that it's not in your interest to have that exclusion, but it seems that there is a pay-to-play if I want to be, to have a listing. Now, Bed and Breakfast, they get a listing, but they don't pay hotel motel tax. And therein lies, the, what I'm trying to say is there's a conflict of interest. And the reason being that I say this is because it is four different entities, Downtown Partners, Chamber of Commerce, Grow Greater Burlington, and Economic Development, they're all their own C-1/3s that provide their own profit and loss statements. Any one of these figures and facts that I just put out to you, you can go back and look them up, pull from the records on voting. And the reason that I know what was happening as an impropriety when I was with the Chamber of Commerce, or with the chamber at that time, was from the IRS exemptions on requirements for 501(c)(3s). To be tax exempt under the section of 501(c)(3), "The internal revenue code in organization must be organized and operated exclusively for exempt purposes set forth in Section 501(c)(3) and none of its earnings may incur to any private shareholder or individual. In addition, it may not, it may not be an active organization example, it may not attempt to influence legislation as a substantial part of its activities." However, the Chamber of Commerce can, and I am alleging that they went along and had the Convention and Visitors Bureau money directly, funneled, and that's why I chose not to be with them anymore. And I just find it to be unfathomable that I have to pay-to-play to have my listing in a publication that is seen in 99 counties. They, the Chamber of Commerce may say that this is a membership guide. I think they're trying to circumvent the reason for the community guide. The community guide is sent to every welcome center in the state of Iowa, 99 counties, and I'm being excluded. I don't think it's fair. I don't think that there, I'm not the only hotel that's being excluded. All the ones that are being excluded are non-chamber members. And what I'm asking from the chamber is to send a stern message to the Convention and Visitors Director. This is not the policy of the city and that you, and being that you guys are not voting members in it, that you, this is not something the city stands for. And you being the direct representatives, who else do I go to? I contacted Tim. I just spoke with Shane right before this meeting and gave him kind of a little lowdown about it. Tim's idea was for me to get ahold of Tom Green or Mr. Calhoun, representatives of the county, but I thought what they're going to tell me is, have I been to the city council and brought it to your attention? That's just the way it works. My business has been in business since the Fourth of July, 1933, in Burlington and has operated 84 consecutive years, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. We've paid all of our pillow taxes on time, property taxes to the city, and I just feel that when I'm sent a letter from the treasurer state of Iowa, it does not list me as additional lodging. It says Arrowhead Motel Incorporated. It does not list me as other. You go to the Chamber of Commerce's website, Grow Greater Burlington, it lists me as other lodging and excludes two others that I know of. That is not the city's stance.
Do you guys have any other questions?
Thank you, Jerry.
Sorry, I'm long-winded. I do speak passionately about it because it is my livelihood.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Is there anybody from the audience, any other comments, questions, or concerns? All right. You guys have been wonderful tonight. Man, where to start the year? Mr. Tisland? Nothing? Councilwoman?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Councilwoman?
Happy New Year to everybody. Could be a good year.
I just want to, I want to say thank you to Steph. Where's, there she is. She got your hair done. I want to say thank you to Steph for going on, taking care of business for the city. That was awesome. And I got a lot of, a lot of compliments from you holding it down. So I just want to give you a shout-out on that. We hold it down. Good job. Also, Timmy Scott, we, you know, to work that out, that was good stuff. That was something that they, that we probably should do, plan on doing like in next year. It was just a, just really nice. The only other thing is, just want to give a shout to the chief. Just want to thank you for what you do. You know what you do, you know what you did, and you're a blessing to some people again this year and appreciate you, appreciate you. You go above and beyond, my friend. Outside of that, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, and city manager was on this morning. He did a great job, too, so it was good.
I don't think he did all that great.
Oh, he did. He did.
I missed it, too. I didn't know he was on.
Are you on tomorrow?
We're supposed to have our department head meeting in the morning. Would it be possible to switch?
Yeah, I can go tomorrow.
Oh, you were supposed to go tomorrow?
Mm-hmm. Is that all right, Rob?
That's fine. It's legal to do what I say.
Ooh.
Steph, I wish we could have recorded.
Does he know that?
Does anybody want to go, anybody want to go tomorrow? Anybody else?
I think I can.
I think I can.
If it's a press, I will, but if you, if you got it.
What are we going to do tomorrow? What are you talking about?
The radio show.
Oh, the radio show. I can't do that.
We got, we're good, and if something does come up, let me know because I, I think I'll still be.
You and I, last time, we were so great.
So, Tim and Jim?
The Ms.
The Ms. The Ms. Hold it down, man. The ex-mayors, the mayors. Right, right. They can hold it down.
The FM's?
The what?
The FM's.
The what?
Former mayors.
FM's?
FM's.
FM's.
Moving along.
Yeah. Please. Please.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I was talking to a friend of mine yesterday and he said, it sounds like you guys are getting some good things done for the city. And I said, amen to that. I guess I'm so proud of what our people have done, especially the city manager, in getting our financial situation in much better shape than it was. So I know we're going to start working on the budget here next year and I think each one of us can tell the public that we're going to do everything we can to hold the line as best we can. We're going to do what we think best serves the interest of our community. Thank you and Happy New Year.
Well said.
City manager?
The only other thing, just handed out the, we, tentative budget schedule meetings. If these aren't going to work, we need to know, but as you look in there, we're looking to begin with at least an introduction to the topic next Monday. And then after that, we're looking Thursdays, 3:00 or 3:30. And you need it to be to 3:30 to, for work schedule.
Well, I work till 5:00 now. So this is going to be okay, though.
Oh, yeah, dude. Well, I, we can do it later if we.
No, no, no. This is quite all right.
We just did it that way. That's where it was last year, but if we need to adjust, we can. We just put this out tentatively for the three Thursdays and then using the off Monday, the fifth Monday, instead of having that off, we get to still have, be in here. We haven't set up which department's on what nights yet, but if we're going to need to adjust, we'll need to know that so that we can make sure that works for different department heads.
Can I say something about this? I really would encourage people either to come down and sit in on the work session or tune in on those days, Mondays and the next three Thursdays. And if you have questions or comments, get us an email so that we can have some input. That's the only way that people understand what's going on is if you, if you will, tune in and, I won't say that. Okay. So please do. Come down. It's not the most exciting thing that happens, but it's so important that, and we need input.
Let me take a step further. We need input on the onset, not input at the last minute. It seems like usually that's what happens is the midnight hour comes and then everybody decides that they want to do the last pull. We can't do the midnight hour. You know, if you have an issue with something, follow along and let us know throughout the process because once midnight hits, as far as I'm concerned, speaking for myself, I'm moving forward. I'm not doing any midnight hour phone calls, so please be a part of the process. Otherwise, when 11 o'clock hits, I'm calling on the singer. Anything else? You know, when the lady sings, it's over. He gave me that look, like, okay, lost it. Anything else? Notre Dame lost. Anything else? Nick McGregor?
Sorry, I'm not seeing anything. I got to be at 6:00, so. I just wanted to throw this up here quick. I went over it last week. The Jefferson Street 200-block corridor.
Oh, yeah.
On redoing that, about $60,000. That's kind of a rough estimate. We will work on plans on moving that forward, taking out of miscellaneous funds in the engineering. It'd be road use tax, but. Any questions, quick?
I think it's a good move. Get her to.
Barry, you got it. Oops, you're 10 seconds late here, buddy.
I know.
Yeah, it's out of miscellaneous street projects.
Correct.
That, we set aside a set amount each year into that.
Yep, 114.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything from the back table? We good? Okay.
The only thing I'd just say, you talked about the timing on the budget. Budget is due to the state by March 15, and when we back in what the timing on that, that means final decisions on the budget do need to be made by about February 20? Not on this sheet. Filed, needs to be filed with the city court Friday, February 10. We, in order to get public hearings done and notifications, so you really do need comments if you're going to have them from the public, not at the end of the presentations, which won't be completed until around January 30, but you need folks to be given input as you go along. We don't have information out yet in Open Gov, largely because I haven't finished it yet. We still have a few numbers that we're still finishing in the budget, not very many, but still have a few that we're trying to get completed on that. I think our goal is the beginning of this next week to be able to have that out on Open Gov to where people can start looking at that as we do presentations next Thursday and moving forward. It's going to be a budget that has essentially our existing staff levels. As there's some discussions, one thing that is included staffing-wise, so you do know some part-time and the nuisance, I think there's a couple of other places where there's part-time. I think there's a couple of other places where there's part-time help. Don's got an extra person proposed in the sewer fund. But you have two other major areas where I think that you'll, that there's potential to have some discussion about whether there should be increased staffing, fire department and the police department. And as you get to those discussions, coming up with funding for them, you're going to have to get, give somewhere. There's going to have, those cut, those discussions will mean, are, do you make a cut in another program, either in operating or capital? Do you increase costs somewhere? Or, I'm sorry, increase revenues through, through some mechanism, which is primarily you're talking about property taxes if you're going to do that. So there's got to be an offset as there's any desire to look at doing an addition somewhere. So people need to keep that in mind. These aren't easy discussions for any of you to have. But that's kind of the framework for where it'll be set as you move forward.
That's the right approach.
So long we got. Nothing else, then? We're good to go?